...to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where which is safe, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
While we come to these lines, making too many lessons for this day, will you go with us and lead us into to make decisions about our city? Might turn around on the list and review minutes if needed and approve of other regular agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to, if it's amenable with council, to ask that we add Mr. Handy's contract for you guys to consider approval. He brought it to me after I got the agenda out. No changes in the in the amount of the contract. All the prices remain the same. Pickup dates are just like they are now. Instead of picking up recycling, he is picking up the the trash on Mondays.
Can we do that when you visit?
I ask, yes, as item number six, if the council's amenable to that.
Is it still three years?
Five, it's a five year. This'll be the third time that he's had it, and he's not had an increase. If he does an increase this year, at least twenty years.
Okay, I'll take a motion to add that to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to add to this agenda.
Take it on favor. Okay, now we've been at need approval of agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Take it.
I'll say.
Take it on the paper. Thank you. All right, we're getting down to standard course. We got Mr. Martin back there to give us up today on what, oh, we're gonna have to...
I'm gonna do it, boy.
Okay.
It's work, work a lot here. That's eight hours on it.
The first day. You're supposed to skip it.
Okay, um, that's what started the church across the street and that was structured up. As far as another non-temperance sewer yet, and I paid, um, what was that?
Who was there?
Uh, the middle school, uh, still testing sewer, um, going on their schedule. Uh, they got a lot of, they got a mixture of private and public sewer, so they're, you know, we're only concerned with the public side, so they're going to private, and as they get over to us, we, I go over there, spend a couple hours, do, uh, whatever it is we need to do. Of course, that's another manhole, and, uh, we're done with the last manhole before we cross over the way through, and so, uh, and yeah, we're doing our schedule, so I'm not sure when we'll be done with that. Hyper Village, uh, the cottage at the Piper Village off of Mendenhall, uh, no changes from the last meeting, um, as of then, they had paved the road, um, with the weather cooling off, I don't know if they, uh, any kind of construction throughout the land. Fox Chase on sixty-two, uh, we did a proof roll on the grade last week, um, they put the stone out and moved it out, so we're waiting on the stone to set up, and then when I was actually, uh, Rick Dawson or myself will witness the, uh, proof roll on the stolen, and they'll pay, um, and then, same as, uh, fiber, uh, didn't take much construction after that, um, until springtime. Uh, Steeplegate Village, uh, there's three lots remaining without, uh, construction permits, um, I double-checked those numbers, so the package you got there have five lots, uh, which was actually three lots remaining where I constructed permit. Uh, phase two of Steeplegate Village, um, that sewer permit has been, uh, completed on our side and returned to their engineer, uh, being sent off to the state, and, uh, there's still work on the grading there, so once they get the permit back from, uh, the state, I imagine they'll start, uh, laying pipe in the ground. Uh, Trinity Point Townhomes, they're grading, uh, some more devices have been constructed, and, uh, they have their sewer permit in hand, so it'll be laying pipe whenever, whenever they get to it, I imagine, uh, a few weeks they'll be there. Um, and one is not on your packet, but we'll be going forward to the, uh, phase three of Billwood, um, the previous developer sold it to a, to a new developer, so they're gonna be, uh, I mean, probably get some grading done, um, you know, and they won't get much, much further than that, well, with the, over months coming, so.
Okay, you guys got a question? What about the current line of work, I don't know.
Townhomes, uh, I don't know, uh, the, you know, other time frame for getting done, and I guess it's gonna happen, I don't know.
The, you have to take this as a permit or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would recommend that you made a reason, but, you know, that'll, that'll be done at some point here from the start. Get out of the corner of your eye, man.
Yeah.
Yeah. If they do have, uh, well, that's not uncommon to have a sewer entry, I know that there is. There was something different around, I mean, make your head out. Yeah, there's, there's a few, uh, Steeplegate Village, for instance, that they have sewer streets, uh, in the private, that's second, Steeplegate has sewer upstream.
We got, okay, we got.
I think it's easier for them while they're, while they're laying the part, you know, something good, good sideways, obviously, is my, my preference.
Doesn't seem like all the cities have done enough of that.
Yeah, yeah, I think anymore, I think that's, that's what they're, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, we got, all right, this time we're gonna have, uh, comments, uh, I have one gentleman on the list, uh, Curtis, uh, Congress, we come to the mic and say your name and your address, and, uh, you got three minutes, I believe it is.
Ain't that long. My name is Curtis Hunter, I live thirty-eight, fourteenth Crescent Avenue in Trinity. I'd like to make a proposal or a suggestion that maybe if you write down our students coming into the city and our side streets, trash, I'm just wondering what we could do if we have a fall cleanup and a spring cleanup, or we could just, uh, one Saturday, do this for a couple hours, uh, just cover some of these streets where there's log trash, especially under the eighty-five solar paths on Hookwell, there's a bunch of trash underneath there, and it looks really bad, and people turn off and come into our city, and they see all this trash, trashy streets, and I just might like a, a proposal that, uh, this, the council should consider, uh, having a cleanup day, uh, like twice a year, uh, and cover some of the side streets. I know we got Jay Carroll, some other people, uh, cover streets, but some of these other streets that really, really look terrible for our city when people come into it, and I just, I can make that proposal, that, uh, let's see what everybody thinks about. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. We'll put that on the table and see what we can do, sir. Okay, next is consideration of consent agenda, uh, through the minister October the twelfth. All right, next we'll have a public hearing on the, on the number four, where you talk the subject to the city high point for wastewater treatment to the West Side Treatment Plant and then the city manager will bring us up to date on that.
Do you wanna, okay, this, this actually is, um, to go to the, excuse me, go to the West Side Treatment Plant, um, as you see, I attached with, um, your summary sheet, the emails that I had received, the last one being that, um, the tie-in has been approved by the city manager. Right now, what they're asking is how much money would we like to pay to buy in for our share, and she gave us options, while it is not mandatory, um, everyone that has, has gone into the West Side has paid at least ten percent. So, I did list on the, uh, on that, on the front page, what the cost share indicates at ten percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent, and once, um, you decide what your cost sharing will be, then she will come back to the second page on this, um, uh, summary sheet, and she will adjust these figures as she has here, um, because she said that it would change what's on here depending on what we, uh, pay as a down payment. This down payment would not be due until the agreement is complete and council signs off on it, their council signs off on it, and everybody's in agreement with what's in, um, the partnership between us. And that's exactly what this is for, I just needed to know so she can give us a revised sheet, and once I've received that revised sheet, I'll bring it back to you guys to see exactly what your payment will be as of that date.
If we do a minimum two percent, then there's no penalty if we early pay down the road, right?
No. No, you can pay it off whenever.
Do we not get our, for this?
Do we have to what?
Get our.
No, not for, not, well, it depends on which one you want to do, no, we do not. What will happen in that, uh, instance is the general fund will loan to the sewer fund that money, and then we can come up with a way that you want the sewer fund to pay it back, you can pay X amount of dollars per year, or when you go after the loan for the, um, you go after the loan for the actual cost of the project, then you can, we can include that in, but we do not have to borrow that, no, we do not have to fit that on, on the loan.
We take it with the general fund, why do we have to, we don't have to pay it back to them?
You don't have to, but you, but once you take it from the general fund and send it to the sewer fund and pay it on that, then what you have to do is, at the end of the year when you approve the budget, is you need to go back and, and council needs to release that payback to the general fund, you just have to say that you're not gonna require the sewer fund to pay it back. I mean, you don't have to, but it does, it does take council action to just say, you're just gonna give it to them.
Wouldn't it, would it be prudent for us to pay the lower amount of ten percent? And can, if we go down the road and have more funds we're giving to pay in with?
Yes, sir.
We may have some unexpected funds in all this, we may hit rock, or something, it's gonna cost us some extra money on the side, so, I think it'd be prudent to keep our money as long as we can.
Long as we don't get penalized or talked to more down the road.
It's gonna cost you more down the road if you pay less now, everybody knows.
Well, I know that, but I'm just, they, they got penalties, they, I, once I heard somebody said that, uh, everybody was paying about twelve percent or something more, we paid in less, we paid less.
But if we do the contract, the contract, one of this, the contract can be fixed, it's becoming a monkey rock, or it's, at that end.
Well, that's diff, that's different than this, this is just the buy into the plant, the contract will come up next, this is just what you wanna pay the city a high point to send sewer to their plant.
And you said there was no prepayment?
She said not, and I will verify that again with her, if she says there is a prepayment, then I'll just hold off on sending a, an agreement to her and bring it back to you, because we don't have to have this to go forward with the project, I want to get it, so that when we start, we know that we're going somewhere we've been approved, we can work out the details after that, but, you know, I would say the six eighty-three, two hundred, because that way you could pay that and not, uh, take a big hit all at one time, because there's probably gonna be some other items that go along in this that we'll have to, to pay, so maybe we can, maybe we can do good with our, uh, permit fees and, and get the money back, and I would suggest that if we get some extra money, um, in the sewer, you could always, um, Jack, you could always take that money, which it does go into our capacity fees, the capacity fee, or, or our connection fee, connection fees, and, um, connection fees can be used to upgrade the system, so at the end of the year, you could look and see what's in your capacity fees, if you want to forgive this fee from the sewer fund, then you could take what's in the connection fees, I'm sorry, I keep calling it capacity, that's what it was for so long, in the connection fees, and if you get money in there that you feel like you can spare, you could always pay forward on your debt, so you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to make the twenty-year payment.
Okay, guys, uh, I'm, I'm like Don, if we, if we can spend at least about ten to start with and have no repercussions, just get them in the middle of the other way, that's what I'd do, although we don't know what the government's gonna do here, since it's been verbal anyway.
We are the government in this case.
Do what, sir?
We are the government.
I know, but there's other things that...
I make a motion that we approve the sixty-three thousand two hundred dollar value cost for West Side, the past fifty cities, five points we paid, we're trying to bring a sign of, of trenching the city about.
I gotta say?
I'll say.
On the paper. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Debbie, for all the work you've done on that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, she's been burning the midnight oil, I think. All right, number three.
Councilmember Payne, would you restate, you, all you have to do is change the amount, you said sixty-eight thousand, it's six hundred and eighty-three, two hundred.
I read it right off the post. I said what now?
You said sixty-three thousand, two hundred.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you accept the amendment to his emotion, his motion? Tommy, will you accept the amendment?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right, we need to have that up here, Nick.
Yes.
Okay, this time we're going to a public hearing on item number two, but I was thinking for this, uh, come to the phone and say your name and your address. Those opposed in this, please come to the phone and state your name and your address. Here now, public hearing's closed. Any other discussion for us, guys? Okay, moving to number three. Have you proposed to enter the professional service group with, uh, Whitaker Radner or public, for utility service? We have a representative for there.
Yes.
David? I appreciate you taking this up tonight. My name's Wonder Vise, if you don't remember, I've been before, I'm wearing a mask, so you might not be able to tell who I am. Do y'all, does everybody have a copy of their? We'll just start in the beginning. The proposal starts with limiting region report, and, uh, I've been talking with Riley for a while now, uh, there's, in this agreement, there's six different scenarios, uh, we can possibly have, and I think we might have a couple more scenarios, uh, that I've been looking at. So, what the PR will accomplish is to tell you the, uh, cost and the, the, uh, alternatives you have, with the cost of each alternative, so y'all can make a selection on, uh, which alternative you want to, uh, put up with it, and when I say alternative, that's if you upgrade the litter station and install a new force man behind it. So that is task number one. Task, we took the project management, and that is the deal, the contractor dealing with, the, uh, department authorities, uh, dealing with, um, hyperwinds, chain doors, or anything like that, uh, on, on the project. Uh, the environmental is, uh, any wetlands we have to, uh, locate, uh, that's what that costs, so, we're planning and hoping that, I think we can, any, uh, water we, we come across, even more across, we don't have to get a hole, we're going to permanent, uh, we're gonna try to stay away from the... The, uh, survey in Sioux is the next task order, uh, survey is just what it is, it's just a survey, and we're, we're gonna try to use as much as to draw a lot of ours we can, to shore the distance cost, and Sioux is, uh, we can locate utilities with, uh, radar, uh, and we can uphold the bound of, uh, utilities we need to. Uh, again, the survey, like I said, is, that cost is, uh, we price it at, uh, the worst-case scenario, so that cost can come down if you chose an alternative that is not worst-case scenario, uh, and we can change the contract by amendment, and that's the only handle of PR, and once you should, uh, choose a, an alternative, we can look at the survey and adjust the cost and change by amendment if needed. Task five is geotechnical, uh, whatever route we decide to go, uh, we have a subcontractor that is going to do the geotechnical boards, or is, you know, where the rock's gonna be, how much rock is going to encounter, and we'll have that price in the, uh, basis, so you know exactly how much you're paying for the rock. Task six is design, and that includes the design for the upgrade of the litter station and the design for the force man, and the design for the connection. Two, I'm, I'm working with High Point to figure out the best location to discharge, and right now it looks like it's going to be on their eighteen-inch, uh, and remember a road named, a road now, uh, but it's, it originally I showed it, discharged it to fifteen-inch, uh, and it all depends also on the alternatives, what capacity you want to upgrade to, say a hundred fifty thousand to begin with, or if you want to upgrade all the way to the mini-gallon to begin with, where you want to discharge it, uh, so, they have a fifteen-inch and an eighteen-inch that we can connect to, uh, I would advise to go to eighteen-inch regardless, I don't even have to worry about, uh, having to upgrade their system. Uh, and then task eight is construction administration, uh, that goes back to, uh, shop room reviews, parker schemes, and contractor, uh, final walk-throughs, and everything else, and then you need to find out the product. Task nine is the construction observation, that is an hourly cost, and we do that because we don't know, uh, and, and that is priced by our construction observation period, again, worst-case scenario, uh, I expect that cost to come down, that cost will be charged hourly and, and the bills will, and by those hours, and of course, Rodney and, or, or, you know, confirm those hours spent by, uh, by the construction workers, um, I imagine that cost to be lower than it is over here, uh, because I expect us to get a contractor that is trustworthy, uh, the only time this worst-case scenario is, is spending almost every day, every hour out, so I expect that cost to come down, you, you're not gonna have to spend every hour on the pit wash and install a force man. Yeah, you know, in certain, there's certain parts of force man we have to see, a hole or a beacon, uh, and it was, that's if they're cut a lot of rock, but if they're in natural soil, they can three, three, big, four, three, big, and just install pipe, we don't need to gather sand. So that is the task, we do have some money there for, like, expense budget for mileage and stuff like that, uh, the total cost is four hundred and four thousand, five hundred and twenty-five, uh, dollars, uh, like I said, for, I do expect that can be reduced by surveying and by the, uh, uh, construction administration. Any questions? They just ran a, the, the, the process is supposed to be PR division from that down, and have to, to present the alternatives and the costs that are, making decision on, what construction to design, what alternative to design.
What if a man on deck can do a force man?
That would mean on that for three days, is there, is there a max, a guy with a gun and a mag, um, yeah, three days, you got about the top of pipe, that's the minimum of three days in the ground.
And so, three days is, is the end.
Okay.
So, I don't know, it's not very big.
That's what, yeah.
So the four hundred and four thousand is which one of these motions, uh, to down the, the, they say to me, or is it all of them, they... Is it number one, Tommy?
Like seventeen? Oh, you don't have that. You don't have that, Tom.
Project oh-six-two-oh-oh-eight-two-oh, brief, they serve city three, this station, and force man, but this is, that is, number, the number one, I think.
Yeah, government, hold up.
This is, um, four motions, this is also what I put at your place just a few minutes ago, I didn't get a chance to talk to you, we've been talking with Chan, and the council, if they're okay, they choose to do this, but we need to talk with him and work on the standard agreement, the, the little fine print back here in the back, there's a couple questions, he took off number twenty, but we're okay with that, just the work, the attorney and I will work with him and get that worked out at the council.
If any revisions, we, maybe we can, we could do that for now and get back to you.
That's fine, it's, uh, it's just the, uh, back part, the extra pages back here.
Yeah, and I, I, I remember y'all talking about that.
We did talk about it, yes, the terms, the standard terms and conditions, it's just changing of some wording, not the entire thing, but we did, uh, just for council in your packet, we were able to eliminate item twenty altogether in the standard terms and conditions, um, and so Mr. Wilhoit has, uh, got a list, and he's made contact with their person, so we're in the process of working with this, and he's, he's out in the car, he said that, uh, you know, if we, he wanted to approve it, just to prove it with those, those, uh, conditions, you know, that you approve it agreement, that you agree to it, and that we work with Withers and Ravenall, the city manager and city attorney work with Withers and Ravenall for the standard terms and conditions amendments.
All right. We can, so.
We could build a motion one, even though there are changes in, or whatever.
That's right, you just did motion one contingent upon, and then, and then it'll go because we're already working with him.
You know, it's kind of a, I think it's kind of fluid, gonna be lots of changes, I'm sure. I did read this, I don't know a bit more now than I did when I lived here, so, I'm trusting Debbie, because she's always been right, so.
The, the attorney, they have some comments on the attorney's petitions, and, uh, that, um, I know, I talked to our, uh, vice president, City O, and Debbie has to, so they're working on those nerves and commission.
Mr. Wilhoit has his questions, they're, uh, drafted up, and we will get them addressed, we've addressed part of them, we just didn't get finished with all of them, but we will, and I will bring back to council so that you can see what terms were changed on the standard terms and conditions.
And it will still be a fluid document, so.
Well, the, the fluid, it will come in, in construction application, that, that's hourly, and like I said, we, we can, uh, the survey is a lump sum, that, we're gonna show, uh, Debbie and I need the hours, just in that, and what we're spending on, and that will probably reduce, because like I said, that lump sum was worst-case scenario, and if we choose an alternative, that is not worst-case scenario, and the survey is not gonna be that amount, so we'll do this.
I'm sure, like, we'll move along if we got, uh, we got a long way to move along.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for the, for the gentleman? Any other questions for the, for the gentleman?
I did.
You're ready?
Cause I'm ready.
Do I need to have the public here before we vote?
Yes, yes, please.
I didn't wanna go up to sleep. Okay, uh, we're going up the public here for this uh, since I'm uh, free A, if anyone wants to speak forward, please come to voting and state your name and your address. Here none, anyone wants to speak against this uh, proposal, come to the voting and state your name and your address. Here none opposed the public here. Any, any discussion among the council? If not, so like to make a motion, if you know what you want to do.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Don.
Contingent upon city manager, city attorney, Withers, Ravenall agreement, the professional services contract standard and conditions, I'm willing to accept.
Thank you. I'll wait. Okay, you can go. All right, we have uh, the home call service contract agreement.
That's you again?
Well, bring it on there, Bob.
This agreement uh, is for home call services uh, and won't rely uh, this is the, the task order. And I I think all y'all have this in common. This is written by E J C D C. And has your lawyer, I'm sorry, has your lawyer reviewed this one?
He's looked at that and he's, he's got some of the same questions. They apply the base. It's just a little one. He wants some word changes.
Say that again.
This is the one he was holding in his hand when he talked about.
Okay.
Yes, he does, but.
Yes, and um, there is a lot of lawyer terms in this. And I said this written by E J C D C. I can go through any of the articles if you need me to. But this is basically uh, it gives uh, town city and Withers, Ravenall agreement to make task orders in the future. And the first task order uh, we would press, this is uh, one of the things. Just a general uh, services task orders. Rodney, was any permitting issues, questions, or anything like that? I've been helping with uh, state permitting with uh, with these sites, uh, trying to get that settled. And we did uh, uh, we're close to it. But this, that's what this is. This is just a standard E J C D C home call agreement. It's a task order edition. And and that gives Debbie the authority to sign task orders to do general services. Do you have any question? I'll try to answer the best I can.
So it's maybe we got somebody we thought we need to.
That's it. And and it gives, it gives you the ability if you have a small project and you need to hire an engineer, you know, suddenly go out or a keys, gives you that ability in there too.
No question for the gentleman? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this time we'll have a public hearing on the uh, home call service agreement. Those speaking forth, please come to voting, state your name and your address. Here none, any of those who speak a vote. Please come to vote, state your name and your address. Okay, we're voting above here. Discussion time.
Does it matter to sound?
We need to have.
I'm wondering, much as you know the warning, it says it's best to sound, so I'm trying to find out if this.
I'll make a motion to city manager someone.
Does he go ahead?
Yeah, they never did, but.
Well, I was gonna make it. And I'm gonna make sure I made it right. That's why I was asking the question.
Well, somebody despite second.
Because if it don't matter, I'll do that one. But I wanna make sure I wasn't doing it wrong.
I think it's the uh.
All right, who's making the?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to the group entering into a professional agreement with, you have an offer of utility services and have the city manager sign contingent upon uh, their agreement between the city manager and the city attorney and Withers and Ravenall on the standard terms and conditions.
No second? I'll wait. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. All right. Next, I'll do bid, red evolution to the bottom of the basin, Randolph County, delegate plan, and that's, that's it.
This is a plan that we adopt um, when it comes to do. Usually it's just with Randolph County, but uh, Randolph has partnered with Davidson this year in this agreement. So that's why it's called the Davidson Randolph Hazard Mitigation. I think Davidson was in dire need of getting theirs done immediately. So we just, they went ahead and joined theirs. It is uh, to help us in the event of a disaster. We can um, fall under, friend, under this plan to get aid and assistance. And that's, we do this each year. So this is something that we need to adopt. It's to help the residents in the event of a disaster.
Okay. Any questions for them? Okay, moving.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Davidson Randolph Hazard and Intention Plan. If such official action is pending, we would necessarily care about those actions.
David, I'm gonna wait. Thank you. All right, we're going with Mr. Handy's contract next. Who is in there? Is there a record in there that the governor this time would need to know? Or we have questions?
Um, before we do that, can we back up to approve the meeting dates and holiday schedules, number five?
Oh, okay. Well, we can do that.
Okay.
Agreed, and thanks, holiday schedule for twenty twenty-one.
We um, have attached the holiday schedules and the schedule of the meetings. I just get one is five A and one is five B. Five A is the holiday schedule. Five B is the meeting schedule. There are two dates there that have been changed because of holidays. I believe that's like January nineteenth and infrastructure.
Yes.
And then we did the plan in signing December twenty-first prior to Christmas, because when, if you don't, when you come back after Christmas, you work two days, you're on the. So, and of course, if if anything has to be changed for any other reason, obviously, we'll come back to council and give you a date.
And then holiday, the first day of the calendar, schedule for meeting number six.
And y'all, when you do our, that's what you drive?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve the holiday schedule and the recommended schedule.
What?
Just wanna point out, I believe.
Uh.
December twenty-seventh. We're in fact this year.
Oh, I fixed it. Sorry. And I didn't add any new holidays to it either.
No, we didn't. All right, we had a first and a second holiday claim.
Who's second?
Um.
Tony, okay, thank you.
What's that? All right, we're back down to the, the door's contract.
Mr. Handy's contract is exactly the same as you have signed him for our years. The only difference is we did remove the um, recycling. We took all of that out and just put in that for those dates, the extra garbage pickup. So the garbage will be picked up, the solid waste will be picked up as it is now. We will still have every other Monday. So there's no uh, dates or changes in the number of pickups. There's no increases in the price. And he does have in his contract that he could go up for the, for the fuel, but he has never done that ever. So he said he would like to, if it's okay, he'd like to get this um, signed, and he is proposing another five-year contract. And he will be taking this contract to whomever he deals with to buy two more new garbage trucks.
And I didn't see it, it had a surcharge, a charge in here if fuel goes up. Yeah, so it is.
He's there.
Yeah, he's got it.
From the big side, no?
Yeah. If there is any.
Was that all, has that all been on the, over that?
The surcharge? Yes, sir. Yes, it has.
Yes, exactly. I mean, Dixonfield.
I'm okay.
Goes up and down, depends on what the world is doing.
And his compensation is the last page, what he charges, uh, what we pay for that. It's the very last page, schedule B.
Uh, any other discussion? No question.
Pardon?
Thank you, Mr. Handy.
I will. I will.
Motion to approve the contract for five weeks.
I'm here.
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
No second?
Okay.
I'll wait. Thank you. All right, code enforcement. Can we have a code enforcement?
Uh, do they get email? I got one.
I don't have. I got one. First day.
Okay, that doesn't. Uh, one I've got, and I covered, we have six uh, open uh, complaints. We call, uh, three of them uh, were raised, they're taken care of. And I'm not sure, guess you guys didn't know what I, what I have. Most of them were high grass, like I said, those. One of them was an issue on Jerry Street. I'm not sure of the national issue. Now, Mark this car, this property, and this car is out there now, so. Um, my eyes, I just, he was taken care of, so. Uh, it's a six, six of them complaints and, you know. Well, including that would be that four I'm taking care of, so.
That was waiting for that. This is our, and it is there for practically.
Uh.
You came over, but you.
Well, yeah. My, my, my cover. So what I've got here is uh, that, that take of complaint, October the fourteenth. So yeah, I don't know how you got it going to get. Somebody getting it.
Yeah, I got one that's been a good while back.
Mayor might be the first one to change. They just, they not afford them, that's all.
Bob said he can get one if.
No, it was last month, so that's pretty, pretty quick. Believe me, they're taking care of it, so.
And obviously, Mark's been out and then the way he's going in uh, had a problem with the code, so that, that, and then. Why wait for that to come?
Does this mean that their uh, gun order will go back to normal?
Uh, never known anything, they all, but yeah, pretty sure.
Orange, yeah. Our, yeah, fine, yeah.
Overall, in the, you got the third minute report?
I do, I do. Marking wanted.
This is just thirty-eight U homes for, so far this year.
Four homes and then three fifty.
Um, just been told the other summer, thirty-eight, thirty-eight is all this year. Uh, because you guys seen forty-four last year, so. Uh, looks like we'll probably pin it somewhere around. Well, I said, get, get in a corner where I, I said, maybe you'll come. There's some problem depending on, to have forty-nine.
Definitely look as well as do with a good lunch here. Okay, any questions for the ladies? Thank you, Don. All right, have I seen the manager's staff? Any uh, any information, comments, or business for them?
We've been working on uh, the cares funding. And we've also been working, Annette has called the schools and talked with the schools. And we just got some information today for um, what they may need or may not need. We're in the process of working with them. I can let her explain to you what we have and what we thought about doing. Basically, um, it's what one, one school is asked for one, a help for one person. But anyway, we'll get a list together and uh, contact you guys. But I'm gonna let Annette tell you what the need is, the biggest needs that we've seen. I think it's clothes and food. And.
As Debbie said, at one school, they're just asking for um, financial help for one family at one school. And I'm gonna contact that um, school coordinator tomorrow and ask Kirk, there's something else that we're looking more for food and possibly coats, clothing, and that sort of thing. Not in the market of paying past due, rent, water, and power bills at this point. That's at one school. Another school, I have twelve families that they've asked for help for. Another one for three different students. And all they're asking for is to help with food. And some of them are wanting to know like educational needs, you know, should they need crayons, pencils, and school supplies? Um, another one, an elementary school, they have twenty um, families who are in need of the same thing, food and clothing assistance. Um, another one is just, they're thankful for anything. I mean, he, when I picked it up from him today, I said, you know, I cannot make a guarantee if it'll be a dollar, ten dollars, or what. He said, lady, he said, if it's ten dollars, he said, we're thankful because they can buy food for the food pantries at the school for the children to have. And then the other one is three. So out of the high schools, the middle schools, Raxton Craven and element, and the, the elementary schools, I didn't think that was too bad of a request coming from the schools for thirty-seven, forty, roughly forty-five, let's say forty-five students. I mean, you know, and I know the need is there. Some of the schools said what they would like to do is just use it to um, purchase food, to have food on hand for the, for the students and to their food pantry. And some of them said the students need um, socks, shoes, and clothes. And I thanked them and I told them that, you know, that we would bring that to you tonight and you could decide that. I told them, I said, I cannot tell you anything other than this is something that council wishes to consider at this time.
Do they still, let's think to adopt them?
Um, I did ask about that because um, Debbie and I had spoken earlier that if we have any of the cares money left, maybe having a food drive, you know, like where we can purchase food or buy a food line, a Lowe's food gift card with stipulations on that card. And um, I said, could we contact the schools? And then you contact, so that you don't give us a name, you know, whether it's Curtis Connor, family needs help. We don't need to know a name. And if we could call the school and say, you know, we've got five boxes of food, can you send five families by to pick up the boxes of food? And he said, absolutely. And they, you know, we could keep it where we didn't have, because the school frowns on names. And I told him, I said, I don't want to know the names. I mean, I'm good with that. But he did say that we could, you know, have families to adopt if we would like. But I mean, every school that I went to this afternoon to pick this up, they were all very, very thankful. Uh, training the elementary. Um. Give me a minute, give me a minute. I got it, I got it all highlighted. Uh, Wheatmore High School had twelve. Wheatmore High. Wheatmore High School had twelve. And they said in the twelve family, there's seventeen children involved with the, with the twelve different families.
Church has been doing, oh, well, we've been, we took forty-five, since you found three boxes, okay, like.
We used to not.
We've been doing it every Thursday.
Yeah, and actually, Craven told me, you know, that they have, that people have really been reaching out. He said, but our need is there. He said, but if you can give me ten dollars, he said, I'm thankful and I'll thank the council and the city and be happy with that, so.
With, with whatever money's left, if you guys are okay with us doing that, either we can divide it by the schools. I know some's got more than others, but that way that's fair. You know, somebody's got three, we got, somebody's got twenty, we can look at the amounts we have based on the needs. And try to divide it as equally as possible that way. And we could get a voucher for the schools that said they wanted school supplies. We could get a voucher or something for them to go to Dollar General or wherever and get their school supplies, or we can get them. Or again, we can just ask them, as Annette said, to call, tell us what they need in the box and see the families pick them up till we run out of money. It's just a lot, I didn't know how you wanted to, do you want to equally distribute it among schools? Do you want to try to look at the number of people that are in need at the schools?
The names are pretty big, so. You got one that's seven game fields and one that's two or three.
Right, but don't you really feel that some of these schools may have more than three families?
Well, I.
Some of them don't have any.
They do, they, they, they get it repaid, they use, find out.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they prorate it. That's, Debbie and I had talked about that this afternoon before we came to the meeting tonight, that kind of balance it out, you know, because if you give one, if you give one school. That's got the twenty children, if you give them a thousand dollars, and then we give a thousand dollars, they've got three children, I mean, three children, that's not really.
That's not really.
That's not.
The way they, they scold you, if it's more or less for the, you, you, you get a gift. When they got a family, they got a, if I got a family or.
Oh, yes, now that, that's. Like, what I asked them to do is if there was food and clothing, because, you know, some of these children have to wait on the bus at six o'clock in the morning. And when they're out in the cold at six o'clock in the morning with no coat, no gloves, holes in their shoes and no socks.
So you don't know if they still let people adopt.
If you want, if anybody in this room wants to adopt a family, you'll call me, I can get you a family from one of the schools. Yes, sir. Get you two.
Sarcos usually does family adoptions, like a coordinate with school counselors. They usually do a hundred and twenty-five families.
And that's what, you know, they.
They provide Christmas clothes for families. Now, they'll also, if somebody wants a family and they can't do, if you make a request, they'll do that.
Yeah, we got four.
Right, but, I mean, you know.
You found most of them in the, in the store.
Yeah.
I was shocked at Wheatmore, I mean.
Well, if you're in Wheatmore, you, you.
Then anyway, but I mean, I'm, but they were all very thankful and, you know, so glad that, that the city reached out to them on your behalf. Because I told them it was council and, and they were very responsive and thankful.
The one in Wheatmore, they're not happy. When you need motion, right?
Uh, just, um, not really a motion, but kind of give us a direction. Um, I mean, are you asking us to kind of prorate it based on the number of families that we've been providing? Um, we're gonna work on that tomorrow morning as well, because we just sent in another request last week. And we've got a few more things that we know we've got to add to it. So we were gonna pull up those things that we know that we've got to add to it, to subtract from our funds, so that we can see. And then that could be something that we can bring back to you, we could email you and let you know we've got five thousand dollars left. Or if we've got fifty thousand dollars left, then that way we can, y'all can, you know, give us consensus or direction on how you would like for that to go.
I mean. Based on the number of requests and the amount of money, you just divide it evenly over the number of requests. Or it's five thousand, ten thousand or a hundred thousand, we would buy, how many requests you have.
Right, I am gonna contact the one school where they, they sent in and wanted us to pay all the delinquent rent, power, water. Because his family's not living in that home. I mean, she went on to say on the letter that they're not living in that home, they're living with other family members. So I've got, I wanna contact her and ask her to revisit that to see if she can give me something with food and clothing.
Well, we have several organizations in the area that are working with schools and, um, present children. Sarko's one of them, there are several of them. And it works directly with schools, have much more knowledge about what's going on in the schools. Any of those school ever have. My suggestion would be to find two or three of those, raffle rooms. If we have money to do, let them do it, we know it's a good start. When you call Wheatmore and get twelve students from Wheatmore, there might be two hundred there and they might not be any. I'm telling you this, you, uh, you're diluting your resources when you could spend one percent correctly.
What a situation. You talk to the dads, counselor or whatever.
Dads, counselors.
What groups are working, I know that's a, of course.
I have many things to give you. Sarko here knows, and we've got a random. Our church works, we're talking with, the teachers. Draw them in and fill them and give them paper, all the stuff they needed for their school year to do with the students. And they got to pick out whatever they wanted with their classroom and their students. They've been back and eaten with us one other time since then. Worked out really good with the students, but we couldn't go in there and take students. They're down directly because we, we've always been doing these boxes, forty groups now. And they have less than, um, about two weeks, fruits and vegetables, six hundred boxes. And we did that every Saturday. It would be instead of. How you put them in? So how you put a box? They're good, they're mighty good, I can kill them. Frank and Gray. But there's lots of, lots of ways good, I'm just, just, we don't, we gotta get them in. Either way, it comes to help. It takes a lot of resources, coordinating twenty big schools. Takes a lot of effort. With our staff.
Up to the council, man, we'll, we'll follow the direction of what you guys want us to do. That's why we brought it here tonight to discuss it. There's, there's the, I think there's gonna be probably somewhere between what we've been at base, forty-five to fifty thousand boxes left after we pay everything. So that's basically what we, we're gonna have to work with.
Well, I, I think the guy, the counselor, pretty well gives us the conditions and the family help.
And a lot of it, the schools are just wanting to fill their food pantry and it's not gonna be distributed instantly. You know, now or through December, it's gonna go throughout the year. They're just wanting to fill their food pantries. A lot of them, yes, sir.
They, they use, they make you breakfast, they give free breakfast.
Right now, they're all getting free breakfast and free lunch through December the thirty-first.
We contacted a while back, we were gonna do, I don't know. A box, a box, what do you want to do?
Right.
Got enough for yourself.
We did, we did discuss that, you're right. We did discuss that.
Maybe that way we know the kids. I'm saying.
Is the free lunch ending in December, you said?
Right now, the counselors all told me that it was gonna end December the thirty-first, as of now. And every student, and then they're sending home meals, because you got to run five feet five, they send home meals. So, I.
Do you want us just to prepare the boxes like we talked about? Call the schools and ask them to send whoever needs it, just call us and tell us they're sending so many families to get it, is that, is that?
I guess, well, I'd say, the way schools are handling, they're putting off three, off three, so. I don't know how they want to do it for us, for Christmas. You know what I'm saying? And that way.
But if we got it to the.
They do it, you know, like, give it a bag. What, they're out two weeks.
Yes. Yes. Well, I, I mean, if we get boxes together like Debbie just suggested, let's fill boxes, call the schools. Make it to the schools and then let the counselor just, you know, distribute the food.
I'm gonna fill box.
Huh?
I'm gonna fill box.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we can have a fill the box party in here one day.
Every night.
Well, we're trying to do something with our staff doing the work, when all we have to do is guilt blame. Stole the money directly and let them fill their thing. We don't want to get involved in personal theft on family. Because I can tell you, when it gets round. And we did something for the school and the school, and they didn't know the authority that helped everybody. Or ain't more than one person, because I can tell you, when you got five people, the ones who are ten, you're there. Thanks to God, that's to let the school fill their, their pantry, let them do it. We're not looking for builder here, still, we're looking to.
We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not looking for lawyers. If we can identify. The bad. Well, uh, other working, they, if we come out of the door. Yeah, the schools ask, and we, there's organizations that's, that would probably be the safest first. Become a part of the money, like.
Well, I have no ulterior motive in this second school to it, because then the teachers will get involved. And they all have a better relationship with the students. And I think it worked out better for them to be the thing with them, with the city, you know, because they really don't care. And, you know, we, we could do every part of my help to the school, build everything. I do know that they're doing breakfasts and things. Each county has been allocated through the, the, things and extra money to do breakfasts and that.
And they advise our team, that we can buy, do what they're buying for the, for the vendors, just like I did, they use, we definitely a dollar and they, they gonna get.
Oh, and how do you, how do you, I mean, when you serve them, how do they do it? They, I mean, I'm, they got family, they know what they should do, they know.
Sarko usually receives on the camps or the request of somebody that's in need or whatever, floating the food or. Most of the time, what they do is at Christmas time. And they get families home to local schools. And then Sarko has a vetting process that he does, to vet the family. Because some people do, say, they could vet you, go play. Somebody on a vetting system, I don't think it's that.
What's that have to do with friends of charity?
Friends of charity?
Oh, yeah.
Friends of charity, that's another word in place.
I know that, I'm thinking about that, that wouldn't be being just with them, office would be being just with them.
Yes.
Everybody.
Yeah, because, uh, friends of charity, we, we didn't try to vet anybody, everybody was applying to Christmas and charity. If you came, we're considering, you got the selecting, you got, you got. We're not able to do that this year, I know Curvis and Danny, Kevin, Tom, Ken, you know, trying to work out something to do. What was, you want to think about it, Curvis? Is that okay?
Yeah, I brought it to Curvis, but go ahead.
The world is that. On this, it's something for the kids, normally we have our friends and charity thing at the high school. This year, we, we've had a ring up with barbecue Joe's to issue kids, a hundred fifty, we were about to have a hundred fifty tickets. Uh, free hot dog crunch and, and.
Fries.
Fries. Fries, go with each kid, a bit of statistics, to go up there for barbecue Joe's and give free lunch for kids. Uh, we, we're just looking for a place to do that, so we drive through, so nobody has to get on, all this issue torn. Also, but we're thinking about maybe a ten dollar mystery ticket, Walmart's, I'm gonna have to go along with that for each kid. Uh, instead of giving presents, like we normally do, uh, we just put on different certificates, maybe a certificate. And maybe down, like, my choice would be that, the new city hall where we drive through, we'll circle around, come in, Santa Claus, we have Santa Claus out there. And, uh, and also, I think that was, and can't put in, something like that. But hopefully by that time, we're looking at the first, uh, Thursday in December, will we have Christmas tree up by then?
December the third, Danny called me this afternoon about four thirty.
Will we have Christmas tree up?
Yes, and he said it was gonna be December the third, we would have it from six to eight. And I told him that we would have the tree up and we would have a fruit bag, like we always give out to the kids when they exit with candy. We will drop the voucher from, um, barbecue Joe's in there. And with Tommy's karaoke machine or whatever, we'll play Christmas carols with the tree lit. And I was gonna contact the fire department to see if they'd even bring a truck, can you sit there with the lights flashing? So the kids could stay in their cars, ride through, get their fruit bag with their hot dog meal in it, see Santa and.
Super.
No, the tractor.
The thing about that is, I think we'll have a lot more than that. Did anybody send fruit sized alone?
No.
Well, I'm gonna tell you what, they were backed up from fruit size and water.
Well, we're looking, we're looking statistics from what we had at the high school.
And they were backed up from Suits Road, all we have to take there probably.
Well, that's a different thing, that happened and stuff like that.
See, it's a driver's.
Danny had sent maybe two hundred bags, Curtis. Yeah, yeah.
Three hundred. But, uh, we bought them hundred, that, that should.
Well, I mean, that's just kind of what Danny had mentioned today, so.
Two hundred and five, well, we statistically have, I see five hundred from five.
But the boys usually put the tree up Thanksgiving, um, the week before Thanksgiving. And then we would like.
They must come to the, somehow, the week of Thanksgiving, like, for that, about South, there, Friday, before our group, they were. They were.
All right. Okay, so back to our CARES money. Uh, we've got school and organizations, as Councilmember Hicks suggested. Also, the Artshill Trinity Senior Center. Anybody got any thoughts on us making a donation to that as well for the seniors, for their meals?
We're only doing, we'd be doing gifts for them tomorrow, through United. That's to do on the rest of the week, we're only doing it, and that's a bit. And then, it all hurts down in the bars.
Okay, well.
We don't have anybody participating inside the senior center. I mean, nobody's coming there.
Well, can they use some more money to buy the food meals that, that you all deliver?
Well, we have, we have, we, we, you know.
Right, we do.
You can always donate money to senior places.
Okay, that, and that's all I was, I mean, that was my thought, seniors and children.
When's that money have to be spent by?
December thirty-first.
What kind of diets and realities from doing that? Was there, was there?
Um, no, it can be used for food for families.
We need to move straight like a grant program.
It is a grant.
It is a grant, so.
We know about a grant program from the city to, we do it, you do. Instead of an individual basis.
Yeah, I would.
We have a family, I'd be glad, Trina, I'd be glad to take them.
Okay, so all the schools in the city of Trinity. Six of them.
Have you, have you got it from all the schools now?
Yes.
Have you got six schools now?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what you're doing.
Yes. So I've got all six schools, two, three, four, five, six. And then what organizations? How many organizations? Do schools, okay? Okay, we will and we'll um Debbie and I put our heads together and do it.
Uh, I don't know if, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know if family. But I know what they need for it.
I will, I will. We didn't give. Okay, we'll do that.
You have something else to say?
No, I think I've said enough.
You have something to say?
Look at a copy of our city policy, personnel, and we need make recommendations to Debbie, I think she's going to be pretty good with new personnel policy. There are ethical things that have I'd like to see this, please look at it and give her some guidance. And if it doesn't work, read your personnel policy. You have any suggestions that you want to make when we get this policy and look at it? We can do that.
Yes, sir. I've actually um talked with somebody from the league and she said, once we got the ideas together, whatever you wanted to look at or add, that they'd be glad to review it and come back and say yes or no, you can or you can't. And there's a lot of things, one of the things I'd like to look at is the COVID and the work from home and the way that works, because people are putting that into policies because we don't know how long this is going to last.
Well, personnel policy won't cover everything. There are ethical things that need to be protected. We have not been able to exactly write.
What have you done?
What have you done to straighten it out and get it in writing? And then it's in forms of ethics that will stay.
What have you done to Paul's man about five years ago when he was here?
Yes, I think he was here. I think he was here. And I um it was with the prior council, I don't believe you guys have done anything on it.
I do have one other thing, I'd like to December would be, I'll be eighty years old, I'd like to cancel the December meeting.
I'll second that.
I just definitely got served, if we have anything related to Seward that might have to be done.
Not unless they come up with something, no, I don't want now.
Well, see, I, I remember days a few, the meetings the twelve. This, at eighty years old, it'd take me a few more days to get over. We just got back from celebration a little bit. Has anybody heard anything from uh the development up there, are they moving on with the DOT thing or?
Still in process and waiting.
They haven't found yet.
They, they sent it to DOT, but DOT's a thirty-sixty day turnaround, so.
We live in January anyway.
Yeah, you are. It's not going to be here in December.
Well, anything else? I don't think much through adjournments.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
Think you're hurting.
Listen, what's happened to your audio video on Friday? On your video on Friday?
Oh, that's going to start next week. I got an email this, at five o'clock. So that's going to start next week. The nice pieces coming in this week, so they wanted to make sure we weren't going to have any meetings and as of, right now and as of right now, um, the infrastructure meeting is canceled for this month. And we're planning and zoning will also be canceled. I haven't received the first phone.
Um, I've sent the emails to the people that I uh, I called and found out from the ABC board. I've not received anything, but they said as soon as they received a certification from the Board of Elections, that they would let me know that they'd receive that and that the businesses could then start contacting them. No, I sent it last week after the vote, so I have not heard anything back.
We have a motion. Okay.
We got a motion.
Did we?
It said there's no more meetings this month.